May I ask you to order an ass in the stand of the President of the United States? And, uh... I'm gonna ask Dr. Levy to do the question. Dr.?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I ask Chief Curran to do the question?
During this month of February, the time we remember past presidents, we gather to do the work of city governments. In 1941, President Roosevelt urged the people of America to make secure the four essential human freedoms: the freedom of speech and expression everywhere in the world, the freedom of all to worship God in his own way anywhere in the world, the freedom from want, economic or misstanding, which will secure our healthy peace and life for all everywhere in the world; and fourth, the freedom from fear, so that no nation will be in a position to commit an act of physical aggression against any neighbor anywhere in the world. Tonight, this is our prayer, as our country continues to face increasing demands and challenges. We rely on God's merciful promise to protect our families toward struggling financially, to protect our servicemen and women, and guide us to do what is right for the people of Danbury. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Your last prayer?
McMahon. Negershet. Trombetta.
President.
Caladrino. Perkins. Visconti. Shinies. Esposito. Sadi.
Present.
Cabo.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Diggs.
Here.
Taisho.
Present.
Arcanti.
Present.
Curran.
Here.
Knapp.
Here.
Levy.
Resident.
Riley. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Okay, with the record, we reflect that there are seventeen present, four, well, actually seventeen, fifteen present, one vacancy, and three absent.
Four.
Four, excuse me. Councilman Negershet is traveling on business tonight. Councilman Caladrino remains ill. I spoke to him today, and he's pretty much sick, so if you give him a call, we'd definitely be appreciative. It would be nice if you're watching. I hope you'll be well soon. Councilman Esposito has also recently been ill, and we kind of appreciate your phone calls. John, we hope your speed recovery also. Councilman Riley is out of town on business. The first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. Any member of the public may address the council about any item on the agenda. You must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury to address the council seat. If there is any member of the council, or which is the, any member of the public, that wishes to address the council seat. Any member of the public that wishes to address the council seat.
So you all made it in the snow. Ken Gutter, eight-nine, eight AM wrote, "I come to speak on item number one." And speak against number one on the agenda. Though it most likely would make me leave with wet shoes, I feel that I would not be up to my civic duty if I didn't speak up. The concern that I have is replacing a man of service and dedication with one who consistently feels that the rules do not apply to others. Mr. Hallis operates under the premise, do it first, get permission later. His consistent run-ins with zoning is proof of that. On at least three occasions, he has been issued cease and desist orders, which often drag out for years. The last one took a year and a half, and only when there was no other option, the zoning regulations were changed in order to make him compliant. But sadly, even after the regulations were changed, he still does not feel compelled to become compliant. Only now, after ten years and on the eve of his nomination, has he decided to comply with Section Eight of the farming zoning, uh, farming section of the zoning book. But I think the thing that bothers me the most is the way that the city property is used and sometimes abused. As many of you know, I'm a big advocate of open space and for preserving the environment. But when I look at the dumping that happens behind, uh, that happens on city property behind the Hallis farm, it saddens me. Behind the farm is a debris pile half the size of my house, and as left, will choke the trees surrounding this very area. Although the other owned city property is very nice, and Mr. Hallis can be commended on the job he has done there, many of the citizens who live on Cannon and the other surrounding, uh, surrounding streets have complained to me about the large signs advertising the farm and its specials. Those have complained about the signs being nailed to city trees. If one reads the lease agreement, one would find that none of these signs should be there, just a small adoptive spot sign. Why do I bring these issues up? Well sadly, Mr. Hallis is not someone who deals with opposition well. If you speak out on any of his projects, you are subject to personal attacks, haunting, or threats. I found this out myself last April, when I and my neighbors, uh, attended the, uh, I'm sorry, found this out last April, when I and neighbors of the Hallis farm attended a public hearing on the Hallis project. A project that many felt would not be, would not only be a bad idea, but would very well be a safety hazard. The attacks from Mr. Hallis and his gang were so bad that my wife feared for my safety and the safety of our home. But worse than that, it suppressed the voice of others who came out to speak, due to their fears of receiving the same treatment. The treatment was so bad that it prompted personal apologies from the head of the zoning and other, and other of its members. What was my thanks? Nearly getting hit by a Hallis pickup truck in a parking lot of City Hall.
Mr. Curran, you're like way off of the weeds here.
Well, what?
I need you to, you know, if you have a personal issue with Mr. Hallis, it's fine. Let us try to stick to, uh, C business and stick to the issue handling related to his complaint.
Well, what I'm trying to do is set up the personality that we're dealing with.
These are all substantiated allegations by yourself and that are relevant to, uh, this type of deliberation, so just try to take them, and you're aligned on some of them
All right. As one may gather, these are not attributes that I want in my city council. I want someone who will listen openly to community issues, who knows the Second Ward and has been an advocate for its people. The only time Mr. Hallis is inactive is when it's in his best interest, whether it be defending his actions or looking to acquire city property. The Second Ward possesses many diverse areas, often needs and concerns vary from one to the other. People need to have a voice that they can trust, not one that they fear. The numerous calls that I receive, "Fear" is the operative word. As I ask you tonight to give this appointment some more time and consideration, so that one may look into the concerns that I have addressed, for the good of the Second Ward. We all need to get to know Mr. Hallis better, both for those that support him and those who don't. There are many concerns that have not been answered, given the very short notice time. If all I have to go on is what I already know, then I feel very grateful to say it. Given the history of not playing by the rules and suppressing the voices of the public, disappointment would lead to even less public participation and less open government. Democracy will never flourish if the voices of the people are suppressed. Thank you for your time.
I'll put you down as a note. Anybody else like to regress the council, perhaps any Hallis brothers and cousins that are here? Anybody else that might address the council? Mr. Robinson?
For the record, my name is Al Robinson, 182 Osborne Street. Usually I don't come in front of the council and, um, talk in the public street. I usually let my neighbors see the talking, but, um, I want to speak on item number one on speaking in opposition as well. Pretending to state what's made by Mr. Gutter. I was a witness to some of the actions that happened outside that parking lot during that time period that he referred to, as well as I can also state that during the May thirteenth, two thousand and eight meeting, um, actions that happened during those times, during outside, as well as the actions that were done inside by Mr. Hallis and his supporters were brought up by a member of the zoning commission.
You gotta, you gotta talk about the merits of the appointment, not about stuff that happened, didn't happen.
I think this pretends towards the character of the individual that you bring up on the council, and that's why I'm bringing this up.
Substantiated allegations aren't the character.
Well, this was put on the record by Mr. Pat Johnson, who was a member of the zoning commission.
Was there a police report filed?
I'm stating that Pat, I'm just saying, no, there not. I'm just saying that Pat Johnson, a member of the zoning commission, put that on the record during the meeting on May thirteenth, two thousand and eight. And, um, based on those things alone, I do not feel this person is qualified to be on the common council. And I'm speaking also on, I think, item number two, the appointment for the economic development. I do not feel that somebody who is a state senator who is supposed to represent the twenty-fourth district can also work in capacity as director of economic development, um, simply because that individual have the interests of Danbury at heart, as opposed to the other areas that he's supposed to represent in his surrounding state center. Thank you.
Any other members who should regress, uh, who is your public, which should regress the council this evening? Seeing none, then, uh, we'll move on to, uh, our announcements. Uh, there are several, uh, events that I put here in front of the council that you should be aware of. Um, all of them, uh, each of themselves are interesting events. First of all, we have a number of birthdays. February first was Bill Cabo's forty. He's having a birthday. Congratulations. Let's give him a round of applause. Robert Arcanti turns forty.
Turned forty on February second. Bobby, happy birthday. Charlie and Lisa Trombetta have their, it's their tenth wedding anniversary on February fourteenth, Valentine's Day. Congratulations, gentlemen. And a new grandpa, too. Congratulations.
Pops.
In addition to that, we have a number of other events. Louise, Louise is a grandmother as well. Congratulations, Lou. We have pictures, too. I've seen them. Congratulations. You don't look like a grandmother to me, though. We can do one up above there. Uh, February seventh is the Winter Fest at Terriwild Park. That goes from ten until one P M. Uh, you can call seven four four, thirty one thirty for any more details. February eighth is the Cub Scouts Blue and Gold Dinner at St. Gregory's, a great school. It's at twelve noon. February twelfth, the Volunteer Center is having an event at Two Steps Downtown Grill. It's forty dollars per person. Uh, just a note of the record for the council and the residents at home, February twelfth, City Office is closed for Lincoln's birthday. February fifteenth is Remember the Main Ceremony. Uh, veterans and members of the council want to attend that. It's a pretty short ceremony, because it's usually so cold, uh, but it's at the Remember the Main statue down here, uh, on West Street, and we'd like to see you there if you can be there. I'd better check in that time. Usually that's an evening time. Usually seven, right? All right, okay. It says two, but I think it's seven. The sixteenth, we're closed again for President's Day. Um, we also, on February twenty-first, is a homecoming ball to honor Alpha Bravo Companies and the Four Eleven Civil Affairs Battalion, who have recently returned from Iraq and Afghanistan, so we want to congratulate and thank them. February twenty-sixth, it's a little bit late this year, but is the eggs and issues seminar for the Danbury Chamber of Commerce. It's at the Sony Hill Inn at seven thirty A M. Usually is a good discussion of state issues and how they, their impact on our local government. And on the twenty-eighth, it's the Twenty-First Annual Ford Foundation Gala. That'll be at the Amber Room, six thirty P M. Call seven nine eight, three six nine one for more detailed tickets. We're still accepting donations, contributions for the Worthy Scholarship Fund. As always, if there's any other events, you can contact Wendy in my office. Uh, Mr. President, the minister, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion that all members have copies and copies on file in the clerk's office that we read the reading of the minutes. Motion made and seconded by Councilman Perkins. Is there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds, all of us in favor of acceptance of the minutes. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. This is majority of the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar for February third, two thousand and nine. Number three, receive the communication to confirm the appointment of David J. Manichek, uh, service member of the Terriwild Park Authority, with a term to expire January first, two thousand and ten. Number four, receive the communication, accept the donation to the Department of Elderly Services totaling seventy-five dollars, transfer to line item five zero zero two point six zero zero zero, and send the appropriate letter of thanks. Number six, receive the communication, accept the donation of twenty-five dollars in the memory of J.R. Sterns, uh, from Mrs., from Miss Mary E. F. C. Manchin. Deposit the account number six zero 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 point two zero one zero and send the appropriate letter of thanks. That would be it, Your Honor.
Thank you, which is pleasure, council. Uh, Councilman Taisho?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Arcanti. Any change in the consent calendar as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of acceptance of the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication, appointment to the county council. Dear Mayor, about me and council members, the Republican Council Committee, at a special meeting, voted to recommend Michael J. Hallis, twenty-eight, Pembroke Row, Danbury, to fill the vacancy of James Johnson. Mr. Hallis graduated from a mentality high school and is an active member of St. Peter's Church. He's the owner of Hallis Farm Market located on Pembroke Road. He's an active member of the community and involved in many charitable organizations. We are confident that Mike Hallis will make a great addition to the council. Sincerely, Sal Shapoli, Jr., Chairman, Danbury Republican Council Committee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Which is pleasure, council. Councilman Trombetta?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and proudly confirm the appointment of Michael J. House as councilman of the Second Ward, representing those citizens of the ward.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Any discussion about Mr. Hallis's appointment? Mr. Perkins? Motion's been made by Mr. Perkins to, uh, refer this to an ad hoc committee. Uh, Mr. Perkins, I want to just gently remind you that we are under a time consideration section, uh, two dash six of the charter is clear that the council must, uh, fill vacancies within forty days. Tonight is the thirty-seventh day, and our concern is that we would not be able to provide an ad hoc committee meeting, followed by a special meeting, within the deadline, and that result of that would be potentially that the voters of the Second Ward would be disenfranchised, or the people of Second Ward without a representative, since an appointment beyond the forty-day period would, uh, be, uh, would not be consistent with the char, with the charter. So with that, um, I'm certainly giving you the opportunity to, to possibly withdraw your motion. If not, I'm gonna rule your motion out of order, uh, and, uh, you certainly can appeal that ruling, but, uh, um, just wanted to point that out to you. Okay. Uh, you'll need a second on that, Mr. Perkins. Motion's been seconded on, uh, appealing the ruling of the chair, um, for the, uh, seconded by Mr. Sadi. For the, uh, council, a, a no vote would support my ruling. A yes vote would, uh, would appeal my ruling and refer the item, and that effect would be to refer the item to an ad hoc. Uh, so we're gonna ask for a roll call.
Could you repeat it, please?
Sure. It's a little confusing, so I want to say it again. Um, thanks for asking. A no vote will support or sustain my ruling. I'll get you a second. Let me answer those questions. A yes vote would repeal my ruling, and that effect of that would be, uh, to, uh, refer this to an ad hoc committee.
Okay, so you asked for an ad hoc, no, it's not.
Well, you're, you're really voting to sustain my ruling, but the net effect of all that, yes. Okay. Tom, just, just sorry. I'm gonna assume the challenge is, is Mr. Perkins might appeal with it.
Point of view, Your Honor?
Mr. Levy?
Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Pinter? There's a majority vote, by the way, uh, not a two thirds, not a one.
Now, Mr. Levy, there is discussion, however, according to our arbitral's of order, any member of the council can only speak once on this topic of appeal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy, for pointing that out. I mean, sincerely. Okay. Mr. Sadi, you raise your hand up.
Exactly, I'm gonna ask, and I'm not confident of my one time, Mr. Perkins.
You're done. So is Mr. Rotella.
I was responding to your question.
Uh, okay, anybody want, uh, any discussion? Any discussion related to, uh, appealing the rule? See?
Raise your hand, if you want to talk.
Okay, Mr. Perkins?
Your Honor, I, I have, I, what I would consider as notable concerns, not for the candidate himself, but for some issues that surround him. And I do want answers to those questions, but I don't believe that this is the place or the forum to vet those concerns, and, um, I, I hope that we do have an opportunity to, to discuss this in an ad hoc committee.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Sadi?
With regard to challenging the chair, and just to confirm, as I understand, that the discussion needs to be to the merits of the challenge and not to the broader aspect that's under consideration.
That is correct, Mr. Sadi, but I, uh...
I understand, I understand. I just want to make sure for the point of discussion that we don't go through several layers of different discussions.
I, I tried to get a little latitude here, Mr. Perkins.
My, my seconding of challenge is based on procedural issues, nothing to do with the merits, in that all items that are on our council agenda, except by unanimous consent by any member, can be sent to an ad hoc committee. So I feel that my fellow councilmen's, uh, referral was in order, and I, uh, that be voting, uh, yes on the challenge or the appeal of the chair, because I think it's our precedent, it's our rules, and under the circumstances, it's the right thing. Thank you.
Any other discussion related to the appeal? Okay, one more time. Mr. Rotella, I'm gonna let you go. I was only kidding. You can say...
So is that a yes or a no? Well, I gotta echo the comments made previously by my contemporaries. Um, very often, an ad hoc is a more opportune forum to raise some issues removed from the formal, uh, activities that we enjoy here on the dais, and if ever there was a time to do that, uh, this, I, I think is one of those times. I urge my colleagues to vote yes on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion, Mr. Levy?
Am I supposed to use the mic? Uh, I, I actually, uh, I know Michael, and this has nothing to do with Michael, but it does have to do with procedure, and in the past, we've had, um, people that were appointed well after the forty-day mark, and I'm not sure whether that's only, there is no penalty, uh, other than the, the council as a body could act on any individual they chose, if the individual party did make a recommendation. And if there was a delinquency on the part of the individual party, whether it be Democrat or Republican, uh, that was just, uh, really inefficiencies on, on their part to allow it to exist. I don't remember it saying that it must, that it must be filled. What's the penalty if it isn't filled? Through the chair.
Uh, Mr. Pinter?
I'll, I'll try to answer the question back, backwards, Mr. Levy. The penalty, there's no specific penalty in the charter with respect to the appointment of a, or the filling of a vacancy. The implication, uh, is kind of like a nuclear remedy, if you will, and that is that the seat would go unfilled until the next election. Probably not the intention of the section of the charter involved. To the extent possible, we try to, we have to try to read the charter in a way that's true to the plain meaning of the section involved. And the plain meaning of two dash six of the charter with respect to this, to this or any vacancy similar to it, is that a name must be presented and the position must be filled within forty days from the time of the vacancy. The language is mandatory, because it does use the word shall. Uh, and again, in the past, depending upon the circumstances, there may be occasions where because a, a notice of vacancy was delivered in one manner or another, or because a certain, a certain time had passed, which is different from the time that has passed here, there may have been circumstances which would beg for a different interpretation, different ruling. However, the base, uh, the basis of the charter is to try to be true to its terms, true to its intention. So here, uh, since as the mayor indicated, uh, we do have a forty-day, uh, limitation, where within that limitation, the council must act promptly if it's to be true to that section.
Within the charter, if I may, your mayor, uh, mayor, uh, just the chair to the Corporation. At this time, I guess I would request a, a written legal opinion on that.
I could provide that, Mr. Councilman.
Certainly, I will say in the charter revision, this date has been moved to sixty days, so I don't think we'll ever have to deal with this issue again, but, yeah. Understood. Any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Curran?
Good chair, Mr. Pinter. You just stated that if, if we don't act on this tonight, that it would wait until the election to, before we could fill a position?
That's one implication of the language, yes. As, uh, Councilman Levy stated, there's no specific remedy mentioned in the charter language in this section. However, the implication of the section, one implication of this section, is a serious one. That is that the position could remain unfilled until the next election. Yes.
Thank you. You, uh, Mr. Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'm gonna echo the comments, the question of, uh, Councilman Curran. With my concern about the vacancy, the seat, quite frankly, given the charter that's stipulated through Corporation Council, we don't, it's, we don't have a right to, uh, in my opinion, we don't have a right to have that seat remain vacant until next November. I think it's very prudent for us to, to support the, uh, the election, the appointment of, um, Mr. Hallis, and I would very like to talk to you, but, um, thank you.
Okay, the question before our, the council again, is, uh, on the appeal of the ruling of the chair. Okay, Mr. Cabo, Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, and with all due respect to my colleagues here, and particularly Mr. Sadi, who mentioned about our policies and our procedures here in the council, I don't think that part of our policies and procedures here and the way we've done things in the past would be to violate the charter. And, uh, I'm concerned that we will be doing that from what I've heard from Corporation Council tonight. We will be violating the charter, which is what we all took in office, a note of office not to do. So I will be voting no on the challenge, and I encourage my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you.
Mr. Cabo? Anybody else which should speak that hasn't spoken yet? Seeing none, then, uh, just to re, just a refresher here, uh, we're voting on appealing the ruling of the chair. And so basically, a no vote will, uh, will repeal my ruling. A yes vote will refer this, essentially, the net effect, as Mr. Rotella said, is refer this to an ad hoc committee. Uh, with that, uh, will, uh, the clerk please call the law?
McMahon?
No.
Trombetta?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Visconti?
Yes.
Shinies?
Yes.
Sadi?
Yes.
Cabo?
No.
Rotella?
Yes.
Diggs?
No.
Taisho?
No.
Arcanti?
No.
Curran?
No.
Knapp?
No.
Levy?
Yes.
Seaberry?
No.
Stanley?
No.
Ten, uh, motion fails ten six. We'll now go to the main motion of the appointment of Mr. Hallis. Uh, with that, uh, any discussion related to the appointment of Mr. Hallis? Uh, we'll start, work our way around, but we'll start with Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'd still just like to reiterate what I said earlier. Uh, this isn't a vote against the person, it's a vote against the procedure.
This isn't a vote against the person, it's a vote against the procedure, and I'll be voting no, again, because we haven't had a chance to properly vet our concerns about some information that we found out recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Arcanti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've known Mike for an awful long time. We served together, I'm a functions at the parish at St. Peters. He votes an awful lot of time to those things. We've all seen his signs on Route 37 for juvenile diabetes research. Mike, I have no idea how much money he must have raised. I know last year was about $22,000 or so. It's all very commendable. Those signs, I don't mind, Mr. Guthrie, at all. This is, he is a good man. I've known him an awful long time. He's one of the heart of Danbury. The Howes family, there's a long history here, a very proud history, and mine will be an emphatic yes.
Thank you, Mr. Arcanti. Further discussion related to Mr. Howes's appointment. Mr. Rotella, and then Ms. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Some serious allegations were raised this evening. I have no idea at all about their merit, whether they're true, whether they're not, whether they're half true, partially true, or completely false. I would have hoped that we could have moved this into a more appropriate forum to discuss these, and in particular, to give Mr. Howes a chance to address these concerns that were brought up tonight. For whatever reason, a left field ruling from the Corporation Council, we're not going to be doing that, but I just have to say that the, if the body doesn't feel that it's ready to move this into a forum where these issues can be fully vetted, I have to say that I am also not ready to vote in the affirmative for this appointment. This is not against Mr. Howes. This is another issue that we've been, if you've been watching the council on a regular basis, you see from time to time when we have important issues with process. This is the democracy that we're in, and the minority and the majority both have rights, and one of the most important rights that the minority have is the ability to send things to ad hoc. I am shocked at this ruling, and I'm not passing judgment on it, I'm shocked in the sense I've never heard the merits of this brought up before. And even on the basis of the ruling, I would like to have seen more time to bring this out. I'm fully confident that if Mr. Howes is appointed this evening, he will make a fine addition to the council, but I would prefer that this would be moved to a more appropriate forum, and unless it is, I will be voting in the negative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotella. Ms. Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to just express that I am very thrilled that Mike Howes will be a part of our council. I think that, being that he's a small business owner in the city of Danbury, I think that this time, with the state of the economy the way it is, I think that Mike will bring a lot to this council, something that a lot of us don't really have, and I think he's just going to be a great asset to this council, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. Ms. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm speaking tonight, and I'm going to be voting in favor of Mr. Howes, and I'd like to explain why, to some extent. Having served for six years on the zoning board, four years as its chairman, there's no doubt, and we've all heard it here tonight, there were several confrontational issues with Mr. Howes and the farm and the city of Danbury. We have a zoning department, we have zoning enforcement officers, we put it in their hands to handle those issues. I personally have never gotten to know Mr. Howes, I think, and I've heard it from Mr. Guthrie this evening. Many of us don't know personally Mr. Howes. I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Danbury to know Mr. Howes a little bit better. I know there's a lot of people that are in favor of Mr. Howes, and so I will be voting in favor of that, if for no other reason than to give Mr. Howes the opportunity to show us what a great individual many people think he is.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp, and Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, this council normally does not sit in judgment in a sort of confrontational and cross-examination style with regard to appointees. But one of the things that is left to the minority party is the protection of procedure. And I think, as Councilman Rotella pointed out, our ability to exercise procedural rights by our rules and under our charter is one of the few things we do have, or have been, including someone who's sitting on this council, who has gone to an ad hoc committee, came back and was, I think unanimously approved as a member of the council. And another member who's on this council who gets along quite well with that person, I think, sent it to an ad hoc. My issue here is that I find myself caught, betwixt and between a ruling that picks two points of the charter against each other. One, the right of ad hoc committee, and the other one, 40 days to fill a vacancy. We violated that rule, and the Democrat majority violated that rule, and Republican majority has violated that rule in the past. I know there's no penalty and a possible implication, as council has pointed out, with all due respect, is that it could go unfilled. I highly, highly doubt that that would be the case. And in fact, I think some people up here that voted to challenge the chair would be voting in favor of Mr. Howes's appointment, and they told me that. I state in my view in the paper to look at each appointment on its merits. To me, this is about procedure. I feel that the minority is being denied the procedural opportunities that we have to investigate things further. While I may not agree with everything pointed out, and certainly disagree with unsubstantiated allegations, I need to support my fellow council members' ability to use procedure to get their questions answered, and I'll be voting no. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Anybody else wish to address Mr. Howes's point? Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know Michael. I've known him a long time. My questions on the charter didn't relate to Michael at all, they related to procedure, and I too feel that the procedure is not being followed. If the council, as wants, any council member wants to send an issue to an ad hoc committee, they may do that. I'll be supporting Mike. And the reason I'm going to support him is I imagine the Republican Party did their homework and did their vetting, and if they didn't, then they're going to have to live with it. So I'll go from there. I can't say anymore that my questions are based on procedure, not on the individual. I see in Washington, judgment on character, and that's not my function. I hope that the vetting process that the Republican Party did is one good enough that they can stand behind. Certainly, I'll endorse it for it, too.
Thank you, Councilman Levy. Any further comments? Seeing none, then, this time I'll try your minds to prefer roll call on this. Okay, we'll do a roll call on that.
McMahon?
Yes.
Trumbetta?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Visconti?
Yes.
Sheenies?
Yes.
Sadi?
No.
Cavill?
Yes.
Rotella?
No.
Diggs?
Yes.
Teicholz?
Yes.
Arcanti?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Seaberry?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Thirteen? Thirteen yes, three no. Congratulations, Mr. Howes. Okay, Mike, we want you to stand over there, and ask Corporation Council by B M to issue the oath of office. And then we're going to have Mr. Levy and Mr. Trumbetta show you the secret handshake. We're all set, ready to go. And please repeat after me, Mike. I, Michael J. Howes.
I, Michael J. Howes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Having been duly appointed councilman in the second ward.
Having been duly appointed councilman in the second ward.
Of the city of Danbury.
Of the city of Danbury.
Then I will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
Faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. A better job than Justice Roberts, I think. Mike, I know you've got some family here, perhaps you want to introduce them for the council, and we want to thank the members of the family for sharing Michael with us. He is so lucky, you have no idea, and you'll be thanking me all the time.
This is my wife, Laura. Cousin John Howes, from the fire department in Danbury. Brother-in-law Brian Farrell. Friends, Tim Begum, Adam Freitas, Sean.
Okay, go ahead and assume your seat, next to Mr. Trumbetta, and next to Ms. Knapp, and we'll get on with the council business. You've got to judge Justice Roberts if you're going to... Just, maybe some consolation to the members of the council. Just a slight clarification of characterization made by Councilman Sadi and some other members of the council. The charter provision that contains the deadline is a charter provision. The provision that allows the council members to send items to the ad hoc committees is a code of ordinance provision. The charter, to the extent that arguably the charter... I think Mr. Sadi misspoke, I think he... No, no. He said charter charter, but I think Mr. Sadi meant charter. Okay. Well, now, for the benefit of the other members of the council. Okay, thank you, Mr. Seaberry. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item two. Madam Clerk?
Item two, communication. Appointment of Economic Development Director.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Knapp?
Hi, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee, where the representative from the mayor's office, the director of finance and Corporation Council.
Ad hoc committee should consist of following Cavill, Councilman Cavill, Councilman Seaberry, and Councilman Esposito. Item three or four, consent. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Communication. Donation to the fire department, Bowinger and O'Hain. To marked bound members of the council, Bowinger and O'Hain has generously offered the donation of a tripod and winch assembly. This tripod, which is valued at $8,000, will be a significant asset to the department and will be used for confined space and other technical rescue applications. I respectfully request the approval of this donation. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to call me. Respectfully submitted, Jeffrey R. Harold, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Curran?
Begging motion, we accept this generous donation from Bowinger and O'Hain and send the appropriate letter of thanks.
Motion made. Second of that, Mr. Rotella, is any discussion about the donation of $1,000? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds on accepting the donation. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Curran?
Excuse me, Mayor. To the chair, to the chief, but chief, you wanted to say a few words about this?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that this particular tool is a highly technical-developed device. It's just a big tripod. However, it's going to be applied to technical rescue, high and low angle rescue, it's going to be good for trench rescue, it's going to be good for, you know, confined space. And specifically, given to us from Bowinger and O'Hain, because they have several confined spaces on their campus that we have actually used to train in. And it's a very good device, and we can use it throughout the town, but it actually has some very, a large number of applications, so it's going to be a very good tool for us. Thank you, chief. Further questions for the chief? Ms. Visconti?
Your Honor, chair and chief, where would this tripod be stationed?
This tripod is going to be stationed on the, what we call Squad One. It's the heavy-duty rescue vehicle that's currently stationed at Engine 23. It'll obviously respond anywhere in the city, and right now, we're using that vehicle to go to vehicle extracations, rescues of all types. Follow-up, I'd just like to know where we got the bow tie from. That's right. I was thinking the same thing, councilman, I wasn't going to say it. Any other discussion about the donation from Bowinger? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have a motion carried unanimously. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Communication. Request for additional funds, but no removals. To marked bound members of the council, from David St. Lere, Director of Finance. Pursuant to the attached request, I hereby certify the availability of $234,000 to be transferred into the following line items. 3003.5030 overtime salaries, $19,000. 3003.5630 ice control materials, $160,000. 3020.5030 overtime salaries, $5,000. 3020.5506 maintain auto equipment, $15,000. 3020.5512 maintain spreaders slash plow, $10,000. 3020.5621 lubrication material, $15,000. 3020.5622 tires, $10,000. For a total of $234,000, the appropriation will come through the city contingency account. The status of the contingency account is as follows. Budgeted contingency, $500,000. Previous request, $160,805. This request minus $234,000. The balance in the contingency will be $105,195. Please feel free to contact me should you require any additional information. Again, it's with David St. Lere, Director of Finance.
With your pleasure, counsel. Councilman Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and approve the additional request of funding of $234,000 for snow and ice cream.
Motion made. Second by Councilman Visconti. Discussion from Mr. Sadi, let's start with Mr. Sheenies, and then work our way around the clock.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a question to Mr. Adewal. The amount that you're asking for for the overtime salaries, is that to pay salaries that are already been spent, or that's for future salaries?
No, it's a projection to finish out the rest of the season.
You think that's going to be high enough to finish, or?
Yeah, we still have, there's still a balance in that line item, so when you take the balance added to what we're requesting, you know, and I shake my crystal ball and cross my fingers, I hope that we make it to when it ends up being March.
And the ice control material, is that the same thing? Is that just to finish out the season?
That's correct, yeah.
No more snow. Further discussion, Mr. Rotella?
Thanks, Your Honor. To the chair, to the Director of Public Works. Antonio, I got to tell you, I manage a little bit of property, not very much, but I've already used, as we were chatting earlier this evening, more de-icing material this month than I've used in the last two years. I feel your pain, I mean, literally, I feel it, I feel it right in my wallet. It's, this is an issue, it's a liability issue and also a direct cost issue. I don't know what's going on, it's, we haven't had a thought. It's getting a little bit warm enough to make it runny during the afternoon, but it refreezes every night, no matter how much material you put down, it's still not enough. But I have a question for you. Last year, I think, or perhaps it was the year before, you can tell me on this, there was talk about super salt, or some magic salt, some sort of a very expensive, very effective compound, and I'm wondering if that's what you're asking us to purchase, or if we're just going back to the regular old pride and truth stuff, the stuff that maybe I would pick up at OMG?
Yeah, we, two years ago, even this year, we are using product which is known as magic salt. It's basically created by taking standard salt, and there's a solution that we spray it with, and it works all the way down to like minus 20 degrees. It's got incredible capabilities. We've been using that downtown. Purpose of that is to benefit our business owners, with all the pedestrian traffic being what it is in downtown. We would hate to bring all of that salt, the sand, actually, into the stores, so we are continuing to do that. The request you have in front of you tonight is really for just straight salt and sand. And, you know, what you bring up is basically what we're all experiencing, is two major back-to-back ice storms, with the temperature never getting above freezing. two major back-to-back ice storms with, uh, the temperature never getting above freezing. So, uh, I still have ice in my driveway. Um, and those two storms coupled with the temperatures that followed, uh, have just basically killed us on the material. Those two storms basically equaled, uh, four average storms on the material usage. We track every truckload of sand that leaves our shed, where it goes, which route it goes to, and, uh, when those ice storms hit, it was just incredible. Uh, we could not put enough product down to get some stability in the road surfaces.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Rotella. Any further, uh, discussion related to this appropriation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Uh, Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Communication, Lee Sanders Park, Bankwood Hall.
What's your pleasure, Council? Councilman Cavo?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc with Corporation Counsel, Director of Planning, Director of Public Works, Director of Public Buildings, and Director of Parks.
Uh, ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Seaberry, Councilman Knapp, and Councilman Rotella. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Communication, proposed service driveway, Long Winch Road.
What's your pleasure, Counsel? Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I would like to, uh, send this to an ad, if I may, I'd like to, uh, send this to an ad hoc committee, uh, and include the Director of Planning, along with a report from Planning, uh, Corporation Counsel, along with a report from Corporation Counsel.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilwoman Tyseults, Councilman Knapp, and Councilman Shinise. Madam Clerk, item ten, please.
Resolution, main runway intersection and taxiway Bravo.
What's your pleasure? Nope, excuse me, I'm looking.
Dear Honorable Mayor and members of the county council, the, the runway intersection was rehabilitated in October 1986. This October, it will be 23 years old. The runway intersection needs to be reconstructed as it is not cost-effective for the city to put any additional monies into crack filling and patchwork of the intersection. For your consideration, attaches a resolution and a request from the airport for the city's share of $6,325, so that we may receive $499,675 of federal and state monies. This project will also include drainage work on taxiway Bravo. Total cost of the project is $506,000. If you have any questions concerning this request, please let me know sincerely. Paul D. Estefan, Airport Administrator.
What's your pleasure, Council? Council, Councilwoman Stanley? Did she hand up, or, sorry, Councilman Seaberry, my bad.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I move to accept this, uh, uh, resolution as proposed, and the motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Cavo. Is there any discussion relating to this, uh, particular item? Mr. Shinise.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, uh, Airport Administrator?
Mr. Estefan, please. You look really splendid tonight, Mr. Shinise.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I hope the council doesn't hold it against me because I don't have a bowtie.
Chief Farrell's got to be tonight.
I have one.
Oh, you're free to say that. Okay, Mr. Estefan. I'm ready.
My question is, during the, the construction and the location, does this have any, um, interference with the operations of the airport in itself?
The, uh, runway intersection will shut down both runways, yes. But what we have done, and we did this, uh, back in 1986, we turned a taxiway into a runway and for takeoffs and landings for certain aircraft. Basically, it's a single-engine aircraft, category A, uh, the speeds would dictate the, uh, the takeoff speeds and the landing speeds. We're going to try and do it prior to Memorial Day, when the air is not so hot. If we go into the summer months, we won't be able to do it until October. That's why we did it in October of 86. So we'll use the taxiway for that purpose.
How long would this take, approximately?
Well, in this case, the, uh, the original project took 30 days, 24 hours a day. Uh, this project will take seven days and will be, uh, completed within that timeframe.
But how would this impact the surrounding neighborhoods regarding the noise, do they, do the air traffic patterns change at all as far as takeoffs or landings?
No, not really, uh, what they would do is, is they take off to the west, if that's the case, they would take off, get airborne, then they would slowly migrate to the left a little bit and follow the departure path out that they would normally, uh, use if they were on a main runway. If they take off to the east, of course, I don't want them, uh, challenging the hill because, uh, it's a little bit less runway, they'll move over to the left a little bit, and that'll put them over the commercial part of the community.
Any further questions? Testify Mr. Siding.
To the Chair, to, uh, Mr. Estefan. Well, this applies both to item 10 and 11, I wouldn't bring it up here twice, but there are, albeit a small amount of dollars, because we're getting significant federal and state funds, uh, for this project and the project in item 11. Um, but there is a small city share, and we just want to know where that money would come from, the city's share for both of the projects.
So it'll come out of my budget?
Out of your current operating budget.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, any other discussions relating to the site? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Mrs. Stanley, you've stated, so we have, uh, 15 ayes and one abstentions. Mrs. Stanley. Uh, Madam Clerk, item 11, please.
Resolution, premier property. Um, dear Honorable Mayor and members of the council, this past year, the City of Danbury acquired the land and the buildings at 66 Myrie Brook Road. It is now time to tear the building down, remove all contaminated soil, remove the septic system, seal the wellup, park the building debris away, and remove the roof cellar that is on the property. For your consideration, attaches a resolution to seek federal and state grants totaling $796,1363, with the city's share being $9,637. If you have questions concerning this request, please feel free to contact me sincerely. Paul D. Estefan, Airport Administrator.
What's your pleasure, Council? Councilwoman Diggs?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make the motion to receive the communication and adopt this resolution.
It's made, seconded by Councilwoman Tyseults. Any discussion relating to this particular grant application? Mr. Shinise.
Thank you, Your Honor. To the Airport Administrator, I don't know, maybe Antonio could answer this as well, but I think I talked briefly about this before. Could any of these costs regarding this project be done in-house, especially like the engineering costs?
The, uh, FAA has certain standards that we must meet. Uh, in this acquisition that we, uh, that the mayor and the council so graciously approved, the building was supposed to come as a package with the acquisition. Unfortunately, federal funds being the way they were, we could not. So thus, we had to, uh, pull out the, uh, tearing down a building and removing, uh, the items in the soil and, uh, put it off till the monies are available. We expect the monies to be available this year, uh, provided Congress does what it's supposed to in the, uh, whatever you wish to call it, to stimulate, uh, the, uh, the bill to stimulate the economy, or it comes out of basically our share of the Aviation Trust Fund, as they call it. So all those items, uh, will be, it would have been coming in one package, had we been able to do it last year. We pretty much had a majority of the work done in the design and the removal last year, but we had a stop because of funding.
Mr. Shinise, any other discussion relating to this project? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 12, please.
Resolution, neighborhood stabilization program. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury, in conjunction with the Danbury Housing Authority, to apply for and accept federal funding for the neighborhood stabilization program. This funding is considered community development block grant funds, and will be dispersed by the State of Connecticut, Department of Economic and Community Development. The purpose of this funding is for the redevelopment of abandoned and foreclosed upon homes and residential properties. The county council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting. Uh, it's from David St. Hilaire, Director of Finance.
What's your pleasure, Council? Councilman Seaberry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution as proposed.
It's made, seconded by Councilman Cavo. Is there any discussion about the, uh, neighborhood stabilization resolution? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 13, please. Uh, is the county council committee in the hall, uh, related to the, uh, Danbury Solid Waste Authority, uh, Mr. Cavo? Up to the Council. Go ahead. Motion made, Mr. Rotella. Seconded by Mr. Seaberry to waive the reading of the minutes, since all members have copies and have been filed with the city clerk's office. Uh, all in favor of waiving the reading of the minutes? Do you signify by saying aye? Any opposition? Okay. Uh, at this time, then, what's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Cavo?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, at this point, make a motion that we receive the recommendation of the committee in the hall and adopt the ordinance as presented.
It's made and seconded by Mr. Kern. Discussion under this, uh, ordinance, proposed ordinance. Discussion, Council. Seeing none, then I'll try your mind. Yep.
I don't have anybody else a chance to talk, but... Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I have a question and some comments, uh, through the Chair to Corporation Counsel. If you can answer, if this authority is established, and we have, I'm trying to understand the dynamic between this authority and the HUSSATAN, uh, regional, uh, research recovery authority, and statutorily, would a municipal authority be subject to HRA, independent of, or how would that dynamic legally function if we create this authority?
Municipal authorities separate, separate body politic, if you will, separate organization. They could collaborate, contract with HRA to develop some, uh, unified approaches to certain problems if they want to, but the municipal authority, local authorities, a separate statutory creation, has its own separate powers. Some of them are similar to HRA, but they're different entities.
Can I follow up, Your Honor? And do the authorities' power, the municipal authorities' power, they are bound to the municipal, uh, uh, boundaries? You know, we, for example, HRA is a regional authority, a Danbury municipal authority would only have control over that within the City of Danbury.
Unnecessarily so. The, the authority could contract, they have broad powers to contract, uh, with, with others, including those outside the jurisdiction. Uh, those powers would include, uh, operations, it would include, um, purchases, it would include contractual relations of all kinds, in order to affect the business that you've charged it with, and that the, uh, authority itself, uh, marks on.
Through the Chair. What I mean is, and I might not phrase the question properly, is not that they can't function outside through a mutual agreement, but that the authority's power, except by mutual agreement with another entity through contract, ends at the city lines.
By itself, right, without any other contracts, perhaps with HRA, you asked about that before, it's possible they could collaborate with HRA on something, I would take it outside, but on its own, yes, within the jurisdiction of the municipality.
Thank you. I, I have no more questions. Uh, if I may just continue with some comments, Your Honor. I, and I stated my concerns during the committee process, and publicly, um, stated that I would, you know, work where there was agreement, uh, with the administration, and members of this council, including myself, sent letters to our congressional delegation, and I know the mayor, uh, and other city officials and other municip- Know that the mayor and other area municipal officials have been trying to get the federal government, either through our state legislators or directly with certain federal agencies, to work with Danbury, to dialogue with Danbury on taking over this transfer station. You know, my concern is, and I've stated this before, would I see a long, potential long and costly legal battle, eminent domain, uh, down a road, uh, a map of which, uh, well, this is a unique path that we, uh, that we try to blaze here, I don't have a level of comfort yet to bring me to a yes vote on this issue. I think that we could end up with partial package of what we want in the end, and not have the end result that, you know, the city wants to achieve of control of the transfer station, and not just, as I said before, becoming landlords. So I do wish the authority well, I imagine it will pass, uh, but at this time, I cannot vote in favor of this. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
And Mr. Siding, further discussion? Mr. Perkins?
I'm still two m where I was before, but I do have a, uh, a question. What would be the first order, um, of business for the authority once it is established? What would be their first charge, their first duty? I'm not exactly sure who to address the question. Uh, they, uh, will have to wait 30 days, assuming the, uh, this ordinance passes tonight. The, uh, notification of the ordinance will be published in the paper, the 30-day clock will be running, the conclusion of that, the, the ordinance becomes into effect. We'll have an organizational meeting initially, uh, to elect officers, uh, will be discussing, uh, again, those will be public meetings, so they'll be noticed, there'll be agendas, uh, minutes will be taken, as any public entity operates. Uh, we'll then begin the, the overall discussions of the various paths that we are following and that the work we've already done, uh, to get us to the ownership, uh, spot of this particular facility. Uh, so initially, they'll, uh, uh, look at all the options that we've laid out. The members themselves have to be briefed and have to go through the same PowerPoint presentation that you all have been through. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we'll begin the process of laying out the various paths to, to acquisition. Same time, the city is continuing to work closely with our, as Mr. Siding mentioned, our federal elected officials. Uh, we are also, uh, have a couple of other initiatives that we'll be rolling out related to this, within the next, say, six or seven days, I was gonna brief you on them tonight, but we're not quite there yet. Uh, and then, um, uh, as we continue to, to force that dialogue with the federal government about the disposition of this asset. So, uh, their initial job will be to begin, uh, taking all the work we've done, calling through it, and crafting and crystallizing the plans in place for the final acquisition. Um, there was, I just, if I could just take one liberty here, there was discussion about the extension of the authority. I'll come in with a letter relating to that for the March meeting. I couldn't extend an authority that didn't exist yet, so I have to wait till, till assuming that it passes tonight. So, uh, we're so committed to doing that, uh, and I've had more people that have volunteered to serve in the trash authority, God bless them, so, uh, that's all the goodness. Mr. Levy, did you hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I'm still a little, a little unclear, and, uh, I, as far as what the, exactly the authority is empowered to do, or, uh, I know you just gave an explanation of that, but, uh, today I, I saw that it went out for bid, uh, based on, uh, approval of this authority, that there was going to be a partnership, a city with the city authority, and, uh, there's always, you're requesting a bid to take over the businesses of AWD. Uh, perhaps you'd like to explain further, uh, on what exactly, the kind of preamps the authority, and any independent decisions on their part by putting this bid out already, setting the, uh, the path for what is desired. Um, and I, my objection to the authority is, usually authorities are created for the purposes, uh, to keep it free from political manipulation, and to have autonomies necessary to, to function in that fashion. I, I think that by creating an authority, in this case, you're somewhat shielded from public scrutiny, and that it doesn't have the same visibility to the authority, and I think, in a sense, this request for a bid kind of lays that out, that the, the public certainly will be notified in, maybe in some column in the legal section that they never read, um, and it will never have the kind of exposure it would in front of the county council, as we do with the ambulance, and as we do with the partnership with the wastewater treatment system. So I think I'd like to have a little more explanation- So I think I'd like to have a little more explanation on this, the bid.
Okay, there was a lot of editorializing with the question, but I think the question was, and I'm going to kind of summarize it, what's, sorry, with the bid. Understand, let me just take a step back. We're following multiple tracks here in terms of acquiring this asset, and we're exploring multiple ways to do this. A lot of this work has to be done now because our anticipation is, if we don't get the cooperation from the federal government in the future, that this asset will be put out to bid as early as the end of the month. So we want to make sure that the authority is not preempted from participating in the bid if it comes to that. One of those ways we can do that is by partnering with a private entity. So if you notice, we, I think the bid ends, or it's actually a file, as they call it, but it ends at February twenty-sixth or February twenty-eighth. All of those documents that come in, and they are public documents, the public can come in and peruse them and look through them, and all of those, all that information will be available to the press as well, will then be forwarded to the authority itself and with results of initial interviews that have been conducted by a team of some members of the authority, as well as our consultants and as well as our legal team. So essential, because we're in such a tight time constraint, we're doing some of the work through the authority now, and this is only one avenue that we're going to explore. We may not get the results back that we want from this, it may not make economic sense for a public-private partnership. It may make economic sense. And so that's some of the stuff we have to do now if we're going to be a player in the bid process when that comes out. And I will tell you that I would disagree in saying that this is shielded from the public. I think this is the most public process you'll ever see. What won't be shielded from the public is a bid process where the federal government runs it, private vendors respond to it, and the City of Danbury, its residents, its taxpayers who have been harmed in this investigation and this criminal activity will never have a say in who controls the fate of trash within Danbury and the greater Danbury area. The point of this bid is to provide transparency and to provide public participation, much more than our ambulance fund, much more than our sewer fund or our water fund. And certainly, this authority cannot act in a monetary capacity without the authority of this common council. So we'll be back in front of you once we're ready to engage in those kinds of relationships or if there's a necessity to ask for some kind of revenue or dollars to be able to acquire the asset. So you'll be part of that loop and part of that discussion. I'd even ask an individual council member too that want to participate on the bid committee is welcome to submit their name to me, we'll certainly allow it.
Well, one of the, if I may, Your Honor, one of the areas that is in dire need on the authority is representation from the common council, somewhere on that authority so that it can report back the happenings there, so that they understand exactly what's transpiring. I think this is the roadmap, the authority is the first step, and the request for bids kind of underscores, it's the first step in financial commitment of this process. The next step will be the recommendation that the authority come back requesting that the council approve ten million dollars.
Well, actually, I would caution you not to say that kind of stuff. A, we don't want to undermine whatever the potential valuation of that property is by throwing around numbers that don't really connect to the valuation of property, but B, that bid document is written specifically to speak of a public-private partnership that does not encumber the city with any expenditures. That's the whole point of doing the public-private partnership, so we don't have to spend ten million dollars. So, you know, I would tell you that that's not a roadmap for us to come back and ask for any money, but even if it were, it's got to come back. You're going to touch it, you're going to be able to debate it, discuss it, vote it up, vote it down, relating to what our next steps will be in this process.
Well, the only reason I brought that out is because that was my original concern, that this is an incremental step towards a financial commitment, and people, the council members, I hope, are understanding of the fact that this is an incremental step towards a financial commitment, that the road or the path is pretty well outlined one way or another. Any dollars and cents I mentioned, by the way, are from papers that were public.
Let me just underscore, with all due respect, Mr. Levy, this is not a roadmap to a financial commitment. This RFQ was specifically designed so that we don't have to commit any money towards the acquisition of this property or of this asset, and it certainly does not encumber this council, the city, or the authority. This is only one way in which it may be viable for us to acquire this asset. There may be other ways, it do require significant city input in terms of dollars. So I would just say to you that I don't agree with that characterization. I encourage council members to read the RFQ, and you'll see, and we've already got feedback from many different vendors across the country that are very interested in this partnership, and they're not talking about us putting up any money.
Well, thank you very much, Your Honor. I certainly will take you at your word that it is not a financial commitment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Nay, for the nays, just raise your hands. Mr. Perkins, Mr. Visconti. Well, we'll have to be, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Visconti, Mr. Sadi, Mr. Levy. That would be sixteen four, right? Okay. Okay. Item fourteen, please.
And hacky for government entities.
What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Teichel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to a public hearing without objection.
Seeing no objection, as so ordered. Item fifteen has been withdrawn. Mr. President, Department reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the departmental report because all members have copies, copies have been filed in the city clerk's office. What's made and seconded, discussion and department reports. Anybody want to beat up Antonio?
No.
Anything for the chief? Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two comments and a question. We, I believe you have one of the best fire shoots in the state. A lot of the folks say, "Yes, I understand."
With that, Polkai?
Comment first concerning the finances of the city. I remember last August or so, the council president praised us for financial fiscal responsibility. Last month, Council Otello asked the chief of finance to give us an update on the status of our current finances, and basically, the answer was okay. Come to find out, the city pension is down probably about seventy-four million dollars, and that's on the heels of the Ponzi scheme. I'm just, I'm still wondering exactly where we are. A lot of the other cities and municipalities are, you know, walking around with their mouths poked out, and these seem to be walking around with our chests sticking out. So, Mr. St. Haler, will you please give us an update on our finances, please?
Let me just, just point one thing out, Mr. Perkins. This is called a statement of conditions, which is published at the end of each month, and I encourage the council to actually read these. I know some of you look at these religiously. You can read our revenue projections, you can read our expenditures in there, and one of the things you'll see is that the city continues to remain in balance with its budget. Unfortunately, we are sticking our chests out because we are in a strong financial position. If you don't want to believe me or believe Mr. St. Haler, you can believe Moody's, you can believe any of the monitoring agencies that have reviewed our finances after a lot of this and praise us on our conservative budgeting and our conservative financial management. It is true that our pension fund took a significant hit, as all pension funds in the entire country took a significant hit, and that's what happens when the stock market drops from fourteen thousand to seventy-eight hundred. You take a hit of about half of your value. But I'll also say, since this administration brought in a pension fund manager starting in two thousand and two, we had a return greater than eight percent, even after the most recent hits that we took over, over the last, say, six months with the crash of the market. So we are well positioned, our liabilities are strong, we're able to meet them in terms of our pension assets. Of course, we'll have to look at what our actuarial say in terms of long-term projections and what money we have to put in there, but financially, we feel pretty confident about where we are, and yeah, I think we do have our chest sticking out, absolutely. Mr. St. Haler, go ahead.
Well, we're down about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent on our pension fund, and that is far better than S and P, which is down thirty-seven percent. Matter of fact, for January, we're doing much better than all the indexes that we measure by. I mean, we, using our managers that we've been using, we're doing far better than most. Now, did we make money last year? No, we didn't. I'm not going to apologize for that. I can say that, you know, we work with our managers very regularly. I'm on the phone with them for hours at a time, trying to figure out what can we do to minimize our losses in a, in a market that is constantly beating us up. And, you know, granted, you know, Madoff is a, is a term that's been thrown around, but let me explain that for a second. We did not, unlike another city, that was a fund of a fund of a fund, three funds removed. So there was no knowledge of any investment that was made into that. And we are going after the fund, UBP, to try to recover those funds. As a matter of fact, we're making a recommendation tomorrow to get rid of UBP. Although they have been performing well for us in the past, and they still continue to perform well for us, the problem with them is that they didn't live by the standards that we have set, nor the standards that they have set. So given that, you know, we question their judgment. So we're going to cut them loose. And that's a pretty conservative approach. I will interject, UBP, even if you deducted four hundred thousand from Madoff, performed very well for the city. We actually made money by investing that fund. Absolutely. So it's not a decision that, you know, I think, as I said, it's, UBP has made, they violated their own internal policies, and because of that, we've made a decision to cut them loose because we don't know what else might come from them in the future. So we're taking a very conservative approach and say, "It's time for them to go." There are other funds that can replace them. And so, you know, I think it's tough taking a loss, but you know, we have not lost as much as others. We, the range for municipalities and institutions of the like is about twenty-five to thirty-five percent. That's what the number's been thrown out there for colleges, universities, and governmental agencies. Some you might hear have been lowered, but they are not valuing their non-liquid assets. If you throw that into the mix, I guarantee you, their losses would be significantly higher. And now, when I'm saying non-liquid assets, I'm talking about some real estate properties that they have owned, or that they own. You throw that into the mix, and some of these institutions are saying, "Oh, we did, we only lost twenty percent." But you throw their non-liquid assets in there, and, you know, the number looks more like thirty-five, forty percent. So, you know, I commend City Corp, and, you know, we beat them up pretty good, and our pension board, again, is meeting tomorrow. We meet regularly, we talk regularly, and believe me, we're, we don't let them off easy, so.
And just so, you know, people are aware of the process, there are four separate pension boards that are staffed by appointees. Most of them are active firefighters, active police officers, active city employees, and retirees that manage our pension funds with the advice and counsel of the fund advisor from Smith Barney. So these are not decisions made specifically by David or myself, they're made at arm's length by the pension board. Some of you have been to those meetings, and they've done a nice job at managing a horrible situation.
We literally have hundreds of different investments.
Sorry, I'm just, Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick question, if I may, through the Chair. They mentioned a company that you've been dealing with when all this stuff happened. Is there any internal investigation going on in their company that you were aware as to what actually took place and why it happened?
Oh, Madoff? Or UBP?
Yeah.
Yes. Quite frankly, their, their investment arm did not listen to the research arm. There are a number of, I guess, flags that were going up, and their investment arm just did not listen. They went out and they continued to do their business, and that was, that was the net result. They continued to go with some Madoff funds, and, well, that's what happened to them.
Followed, if I may. Having sat with you and the people from the companies who were dealing with the city, when we lost the four hundred thousand dollars, what effect, if any, did that have on their report, where the city's finances were? The Audit Committee, correct? If there was any effect at all from the Audit Committee on the four hundred thousand, once that was found that we lost, would that affect their, their report at all?
No. No, the, basically, that was after, you know, it was noted as a subsequent event, you know, in, in our discussions, you talked about it in detail, and we also explained what measures we're going to take in regards to remedy that.
Thank you. Which means we dropped UBP, the pension board's dropped UBP.
Right. We'll be dropping it, we're going to follow that.
Mr. Curran, are we having this tomorrow?
Well, that's when we're all meeting.
Yeah. David, through the Chair. Basically, it's going to depend on the actuary report anyway, right, how it's going to affect the city itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, we. Has the actuary report been done?
Well, not, not given the impact of everything that's happened this fall, no. No, we valued as of July first of two thousand and eight, so.
But you know, Mr. Curran, everybody's got the same problem.
Yeah.
Oh, I know that.
It's going to have an impact, and it's going to take us out, you know, a few years.
I mean, I've talked to other, other cities and fire departments, and we took a lot less hit in Danbury than a lot of other cities.
Sure.
For fact, right here in Connecticut.
We have. Sir, a lead.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, certainly, our finance director or anybody else is not held responsible for the tsunami that occurred in the financial industry. All those people that had any kind of investments, lost, some of them fifty percent of their investment or more. It was a tough time. During the good times, though, when we were, when the stock markets were really rolling and we were actually generating more money in those investments than we needed from an actuary standpoint, where were those funds in surplus? Because a lot of times, I think you leave them in there to, the good times cover the bad times.
Absolutely.
Did we leave it all there, or did we spend some of it?
No.
You can't spend it. It has to stay in the pension fund. By ordinance, you can't take it out. Now, some, I don't want to really complicate things, some communities have used that via ordinance through their OPEC, you know, their health, retiree health benefit trust. I don't know how you get there. We have lawyers look at that, you can't do it. I don't think you can.
And then, of course, the other aspect of the financing is, we know building, construction is down, real estate is off, transfer taxes that we, property transfer taxes that we normally get are kind of evaporating up and everything, and that hits the revenue side of the budget that we anticipated, and I think that that's probably, and yeah, I do, I looked through the report somewhat, but I like to bring it out in a public forum as well because it's not that any one individual is responsible, we can hold the whole country responsible because it's happening all across the country, but we're concerned about our own backyard and how we're going to deal with this financial tsunami, and we can't afford it in taxes either. So how is that aspect as far as real estate, transfer money, and building permits and all? and building permits, and all of the related revenue streams, how is that?
Well, you can see the, you know, from your statement of conditions, building permits and those things were consistent, were okay, because we expected a downturn. The conveyance taxes and the town clerk fees were far lower than we expected on those things. So, and you can see that in the statement of conditions.
And we've been pretty open about that, but that's one of the reasons why we put the freeze on, that's why we put the hiring freeze on, the spending freeze on, so that
Yeah.
we'll finish, we'll finish the year in the black, but it'll be, it's going to be tight. It's going to be tight, you know. And we don't think we're going to need any mass layoffs or anything like that, but other communities are doing. I will tell you, next year, we'll see in April, but it's going to be a difficult budget for all of us, so. Mr. Riddell.
Thanks, your honor. Through the chair to the chief of police, please.
Chief Baker.
Chief, in this month's booklet of departmental reports and the 2008 Uniform Crime Report, I'm looking at eight major categories, and I'm looking at statistics that say that we are down in every single one except for one, and which point we're tied. We heard information, I think, last month or the month before, that Danbury was ranked one of the safest, if not the safest, city in Connecticut. And there was some chatter about, you know, comparing apples and oranges and whatnot, and, you know, the towns are not exactly the same, the highways, this and that, whatever. But Danbury compared to Danbury, which really is apples and oranges, if we compare this year's statistics, meaning year 2008 to the previous year, we are down in major crimes in every category.
Except for thefts.
Except for thefts, which, let's see, I've got twelve twenty-seven here and one thousand thirty-eight from last year. But in the big, in the big, if I made the scale.
Violent crimes, all four violent crimes were down.
Violent crimes are down.
And three and four property crimes.
Well, yeah, one of the defining characteristics of a safe city is the amount of violent crimes, and that's a statistic that you really want to see heading south, and we are.
Yes, sir.
Right. Can you tell me how many murders Danbury had last year?
Zero.
Zero. Zero. We had none at all?
None at all.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? See none, then? I'll try your minds, accepting department reports, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? A couple of quick things. Before we break tomorrow, I'll be in Hartford to receive the glory that is of our state budget. I am so excited about this opportunity. And if you hear the screaming and anguish and crying, that's probably me. You're welcome to give me a buzz later on if you want to find out what happened. I'll be happy to brief you, or maybe I'll shoot a little email and circulate it around for everybody, if you care. We also have another tour of the transfer station. For those that couldn't make the first one, that's February twenty-eighth. It's a Saturday morning, same train deal. We'll meet at Duchess at nine o'clock, and then we'll take a walk over and check it out. So, with that, I'm going to extend all committees. I'm going to replace Councilman Johnson on the Union Savings Bank Committee. Councilwoman McMahon, will you do that for me? Thank you. She will head that committee. It's a hot potato, so have fun with it. And other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.